This conference will now be recorded.
Roll call, roll call, Shannon.
Mayor, Commissioner.
Here.
Commissioner Gandy.
Here.
Commissioner Butcher.
Here.
Commissioner Campos.
Here.
Commissioner Bowles.
Here.
Commissioner Campos will lead us in prayer and pledge.
You want me to start with the invocation first, Ms. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. Join me in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we ask you that you be with us tonight, Lord. We thank you for allowing us to gather here tonight, Lord, even considering all the, all the problems that we're having throughout this, this world, Lord, considering the pandemic. We thank you, Lord, for still allowing us to be healthy and well. We ask that you protect all the peoples, Lord, in Lovington, Lee County, New Mexico, the country and the world, and help us to arrive at a vaccine for this, this pandemic, Lord. We, we tell you, the Lord, that you are blessed, and you are a Lord of mercy, who through your son gave us a marvelous example of charity and a great commandment of love for one another. Send down your blessings, Lord, upon us, your servants, who generously devote ourselves to helping others when they are called in on times of need. Let us faithfully serve you and our neighbors. We ask you through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Now the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the zeus symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Their motion approved. The agenda is submitted. Roll call motion.
Commissioner Butcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Campos.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles.
Yes.
Mayor, Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes. Approval of the minutes is, approval of the agenda is approved. Moving on to consideration of minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion was made, second.
Commissioner Campos.
Yes.
Mayor, Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles.
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher.
Yes. Minutes are approved. Moving on to Commissioner and staff reports. Wyatt.
Mayor and Commissioners, I have nothing new to report at this time.
Oh, yeah. Oh, nothing more. Does the board have any questions for Wyatt? Okay, moving on to Gary.
Gary is actually out sick today.
Okay.
Do you have nothing to pass along?
Okay, nothing else. Gary is out today. Commissioner Campos, is there any question by the board?
No.
Moving on to Shannon.
No, sir.
Board have any questions for Shannon? Moving on to Commissioner Bowles.
No, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bernard.
No, sir.
Commissioner Campos.
No, thank you.
Commissioner Gandy.
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. Moving on to Chief Rodriguez. He has a presentation for us today.
James, can I say real quick? Mayor, Commissioner. Individuals. Probably going to kill me before, oh, a takeover. On August 6th, just to give a brief description of what's going on, August 6th, officer took his back to the residential town in reference to the name of the victim. In reference to an individual that was not breathing and responsive. James and Officer Porras chill up. Officer Porras conduct CPR on a gentleman who was able to bring him back to life. They get him loaded, he shows up, they get him loaded, James is still assisting them. The gentleman ends up coding again in the ambulance. They start CPR and they ended up defibrillating him. And the gentleman ends up surviving. By the time he gets to the hospital, he's awake and conscious. I just wanted to present both of these individuals with the Life Savings Award, which reads, "The recognition of your unselfish actions during an emergency situation, which resulted in the saving of life. Your proper communication training and experience exemplifies your dedication to duty, the preservation of life, and the service to this community." With that being said, thank you both for going above.
Hello, Matt. Thank you, thank you. Is there any questions by the board for Chief Rodriguez?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
How is that, what's the status, status on the gentleman now? Is he doing okay?
As far as we know, I checked this morning on the hospital, he was awake and conscious when they shipped him out.
Fantastic. Did he suffer a heart attack? Is that what it was?
We don't know.
Okay, very good. Congratulations.
Same.
James and Officer Torres, Porras.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Moving on to Chief Rosardo.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
If I may, I just had a question for Chief Rodriguez concerning that shooting that we had a couple of weeks ago. I just wanted to know if he has an update for us on that.
Okay, just one, one sec. Go ahead and repeat yourself, Commissioner.
I would just go, wanted to ask Chief Rodriguez if he had an update on that drive-by shooting we had a couple of weeks ago.
They were finally able to re-interview the victim after he was released from the hospital. He is, what I was told, he is not very cooperative as of right now, so the investigation is still active and we'll go from there.
All right, so he did not name any suspects, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Chief Rosardo.
Mayor, Commissioners, I want to congratulate those two individuals as well. Also, next week, we should be doing the final inspection of our rescue truck. So that's another way that we'll be adding to the, to the department. And then also, Simmons Martin had contacted me yesterday and advised us that they would like to showcase our truck in the calendar for Simmons Martin's calendar next year. So they should be coming in Monday to do that photo shoot for that truck. Other than that, that's all I have.
Does the board have any questions for Chief Rosardo? There's no questions. Moving on to City Manager James Williams. Thank you, Chief.
Mayor Commissioners, the only thing I have to report is Friday, we have rescheduled our driving movie, I still believe. So it'll be out at the Fairgrounds parking lot. Movie starts at 8:45. New truck should be on site at 7:00.
Is there any questions for City Manager James Williams? There's no questions. Moving on to City Attorney McMahon.
Mayor and Commissioners, I want to report.
Thank you. Is there any questions for McMahon? Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to a public comment. There is no public comment. Move on to action items. Do I have a motion? Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2020-068, Approval of Amendment, Memo Randomly of Agreement Between the City of Nor, City and Norley Hospital and Healthcare Worker Child Education and Care.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Bernard, second by Commissioner Bowles. Discussing, James.
Mayor Commissioners, as you're aware, school, for the backup, it was originally going to be a hybrid model with in-person instruction and a lot of online instruction. However, with different changes, we all know that it's strictly online right now until, hopefully after Labor Day, they'll be able to start doing face-to-face. However, we face the same issue that we did when school was closed early, and that's our essential workers, mainly city employees as well as our healthcare workers. We needed somebody to be able to supervise these folks. Simply put, there wasn't enough daycare available. So what we have worked out is a youth center program where it's a structured environment where students, not only hospital employees, but also a few of our city workers can send their children there where it is a supervised structured environment. They get assistance, making sure that they're able to log in to participate in the online components. We also provide them some structured activities as well to where they're just not sitting in front of a computer all day. There's two periods. But Norley, through some of the care, the federal care's funding that they have received, is able to help offset some of the costs of basically running our youth center beyond what is normally budgeted for and to accommodate the additional supervision needed to maintain a 1 to 12 ratio, we were required to bring on two additional part-time employees. So Norley, if there's funding available in this MOA, would allow us to enter into this, for this particular program, and Norley will compensate us $3,500 a month until June 1st of 2021.
Thank you, Chief. Is there any questions by the board?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Like you said, it's going to be a 12 to 1 ratio?
Yes.
And how many people are there? You got a higher two part-time?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to give an add total.
So we can safely, to meet COVID safe practices, we have 70 students total enrolled. So we basically have four. We had hired two, so we have a total of six, and these are part-time employees as well. So we're not having to compensate them for sickly or healthcare as well.
So I just, as I said, I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
Down. As far as the staff, is everybody going to be CPR certified, trained, or whatever?
Yes, sir. They are. They are. The newer employees, we've still got to get that set up, of the employees who are there, they are.
And as far as, how are the kids going to be getting meals when they're there? What's going to be going on with that?
Definitely. So one of the things these schools is required, they still provide the basically grab-and-go lunches at no, no cost to these students. So what we do is we send our employer to, over to the pickup site to pick up those meals for those students that day.
So the schools are going to have the meals all set?
Yes, sir.
For the students? Okay, okay. That's questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just had a question for James.
Yes, sir.
James, you mentioned that the program will follow COVID safe practices. Does that mean that all the students and all the employees will have to be masked up?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We require our staff, as well as the students, are required to wear face coverings. Also, whenever parents bring their children by before they leave, they have to go through our screening, which basically it's, it's a temperature check and to make sure that they're not experiencing any signs or symptoms. If a child is ill, and it doesn't necessarily have to be COVID, it could be anything else. We don't allow them entry into the facility just so we can keep kids healthy.
And James, will be maintaining social distancing as well?
Yes, sir. We have our capacities over there following the, the criteria that we had established at other buildings. Based on square footage, where basically the occupancy in each room would allow for them to remain at least six feet or more away from other individuals.
Okay, very good. And just one last question. All parents, any parents who's picking up their child, if they're going into the building, they'll be required to wear a mask, as well, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any other questions by the board? There's no other questions. Roll call, Shannon.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles.
Yes.
Mayor, Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Campos.
Yes.
Resolution passes. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2020-69, Release of Grant of Lean for 817 West Adams.
I'll second that. Motion was made by Commissioner Gandy, second by Commissioner Bernard. James?
Yes, sir. So the, actually, this item and the very next item are related to each other. If you recall, three years ago, we entered into a project participation agreement for the Dryland Murray Project in order to transfer the $100,000 in state economic development incentives to them. Part of that particular agreement was that they, the owners of Dryland had to put up a security in the event that the project failed, that the state via the city could recoup its funding. How they did that was each one of the two partners, they placed a residential property or allowed a lien to be placed in the amount of $50,000, in this case, 817 West Adams, a $50,000 on this property, which was automatically set to expire December 31st of 2022. So one of the owners of the property, they were wanting to sell this particular property, and of course they can't because there's an outstanding lien on it. If we contacted the state economic development department, actually, they contacted the economic development department. We've been involved in the, in the whole process, and the state did an economic impact analysis on the project year-to-date. And essentially, the state has already recouped $80,000 of its, of its $100,000 investment from this through the Drylands project. What they arrived at was the, the state is willing to allow us to release those two liens on that property so long as that we have another form of security, in this particular case, another lien on another piece of property that they have on, which is at the corner of Main and Adams that's used for overflow parking for the property. It is owned by them, so we would file that $20,000 lien on that, and they would satisfy it. And then once either the state recoups its investment of the additional $20,000, or it hits December 31st of 2022, it would automatically be removed from the property. So what this resolution does is authorizes us to file the release at the courthouse. And then we'll turn around and we'll simultaneously file a lien on this other property.
Is there any questions by the board?
I was going to see my question and said, I wanted to find out, were we placing that lien on that property?
Yes, sir.
First, before we release the liens, or?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So what we'll do is tonight, Mayor can actually sign the release of lien. We have the other lien. It's literally sitting on my desk. For them to get that signature, and we'll, we'll file them all at the same time.
Is there any other questions? There's no further questions. Roll call, Shannon.
Commissioner Bowles.
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Commissioner Campos.
Yes.
Mayor, Commissioner.
Yes. Resolution passes. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, resolution 2020-070, Release of Grant on Lien of 205 West Van Guren.
Second. Motion was made by Commissioner Bowles, second by Commissioner Bernard. James?
Mayor Commissioners, this is the piece of property that was found in two.
Is there any questions by the board?
Yeah, I just wanted to find out, where is that new property that you were talking about, James?
The property for the $20,000, right there, it would be the northeast corner of Main and Adams. So you have Dryland, it's a major.
Yes, sir. Okay, okay, thank you. Is there any other questions by the board? There's no other questions. Roll call, Shannon.
Commissioner Campos.
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher.
Yes.
Mayor, Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles.
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes. Resolution passes. Do I have a motion? Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2020-071, Approval of Amendments to Agreements with the City and BP Terra Capital LLC Utilities Extension. Second. Motion was made by Commissioner Bernard, second by Commissioner Gandy. James?
Mayor Commissioners, if you remember, back on July 13th, we approved an agreement with BP Terra Capital for the extension of utilities on North Main for the hotel, retail center, and housing subdivision. Basically, disagreement was created due to the fact that Constructors Inc., who was the chosen contractor by BP Terra Capital, could not issue, their bonding company could not issue a bond with more than one person's name. Just for, in case the, their project's not installed right, they didn't know who they would have to actually pay off damages to. So with this particular agreement, so we could remain timely and also stay within procurement code, the city will be acting as the lien on this particular project with BP Terra Capital paying for any expenses over the initial $175,000 that we've agreed to, $150,000 from the local economic development fund, as well as an additional $25,000 for adjacent private property owners who are developing. So we approved this agreement after giving BP Terra Capital plenty of time to review it, and they came back with their, their attorney got back to us on July 17th and wanted to drastically alter, basically, the whole harmless and indemnification agreement. After much back and forth with this very busy man here, and their attorney, they have come up with a language which puts this, that protects the city. They've been given ample time to review it. Haven't heard anything else unless you have anything to add. We are still protected. It's just with the change to the whole harmless agreement, I sure as heck did not feel comfortable just signing off on those changes. I just wanted to make sure that you all have the ability to take formal action on it, if there was any particular public comment on it. But it is ready for execution, should it be approved tonight.
Is there any questions by the board?
We had a question for Patrick. You're comfortable with that?
Yes, yeah. It's a, the identification language to, to limit it to the, for the duties and obligations of BP as opposed to everything else that's happening in the project. So they're responsible for identification based on, they're part of the contract, not, let's say, Constructors and their installation.
Thank you.
Sure.
There's no other further questions. Roll call, Shannon.
Mayor, Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Campos.
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles.
Yes. Resolution passes. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2020-072, Disposal of Fixed Assets. So I got, motion was made by Commissioner Bernard, second by Commissioner Gandy. James?
Mayor Commissioners, several months ago, we had a, one of our police cruisers, a 2013 Dodge Charger, that was involved in a motor vehicle collision. Insurance company evaluated it and totaled the car. So this resolution will allow us to remove this particular asset from our fixed assets list and accept the payment from the insurance company for the total wreckage, so we can begin the process of replacement.
Is there any questions by the board? There's no questions. Roll call, Shannon.
Commissioner Bowles.
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Campos.
Yes, thank you.
Mayor.
Resolution passes. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider accounts payable.
Motion was made by Commissioner Campos, second by Commissioner Bowles. James?
Mayor Commissioners, we have the accounts payable list for you. I guess I would, well, one of the largest ones, Lovington Economic Development Corporation, $15,000. That is for our project participation agreement for the retail recruitment project that we have partnered with the county DUC on. The Lovington Wellness Center, that is part of, for $16,418, that is actually part of our agreement with them to help offset operational costs. Right, we're obligated to a maximum of $9,375 per month. This is basically for a month and a half. We are not being assessed any cost for the period in which they weren't able to operate. But as to Combs, $24,000, we had to replace a flite pump. I have one of our lift stations for the wastewater department. And I would answer any other questions you may have. What pump was that again? It's called a flite pump, F-L-E-Y-P. I guess it's like the particular brand that we use. How would they move their water? What did you want to worry?
Hey, James.
Yes, sir.
What is the participation level out there at the Wilderness Center? Do you know?
You know, Mayor, Commissioner Campos, that's a good question. I was hoping to have that information today, and I talked to the director out there, and they did have a error on their, I guess you would say, their invoicing system, how we keep track of attendance. So he has not issued any invoices at this point. So as soon as I get that, I'll definitely send that information out to you.
Very good. Thank you.
James, I got a question.
Sir.
Who is BICI?
BICI, sir, is where they, we get chemicals for wastewater treatment.
Is that a typo on Florida River? I didn't think they could sell anything that cheap. And the visa cards, there, James?
Yes, sir.
And I want to know, I'd like to know how they, how that works as far as, who do they get charged to? You know, I added them all up, and it came over, over $5,000. And just wondering, what, whose budget does that go towards, or what does that, how does that get, uh, defended?
So Mayor, Commissioner Bowles, the visas are actually issued to department heads. With the exception of some of our travel cards, which those are assigned to individuals who have to go somewhere on city, official city business. So I do have some, the, the report that I'm, I was able to generate, it shows the highest expenditure, the name of the highest venture, what the purchase order was made out to. The credit cards are essentially used just like generating a check. Prior to us being able to make a purchase, we have to go through the requisition and purchase order system. So for instance, the first visa, the 999, that was for uniform expenses to the police department. The next one, 1245, that was for, assigned to our public works department, water and wastewater. We also had a second visa for the police department. This was, Uh, this was, I'm not exactly sure what that was for, it was Telefora. Um, we also had on the travel card, this was the table samples, uh, to Albuquerque, uh, it sounds like mailing them off and using a visa. Uh, five oh four eight, uh, this was Public Works, this is for temp gun, temperature gauge gun. Uh, eight six two one, I believe that was for our parks department, it was a park for a mower. Uh, the back, uh, nine two eight zero, I have to check to see what department that was. This was for, the, the largest purchase was for some type of, uh, vacuum repair, maybe or so, possibly on a truck. Nine nine four two, that's, uh, that's actually mine. Uh, and so that one always has, is typically higher, uh, because like our city email accounts Gmail, we spend between six and seven hundred dollars a month for hosting that and that gets billed to my credit card. Uh, the go-to meeting fee, sixty-two dollars a month. Uh, we also have a hundred and ninety dollars for theater, uh, software, uh, but I can definitely get you copies of everything, but that's, they are assigned to an individual. And when the, uh, visa statements come in, the department head basically has to reconcile their purchase orders to those particular purchases.
I was just kind of wondering what budgets they were coming out of?
Yes, sir.
So that way they're, no one's going to the right?
Yes, sir, they are.
Period. So, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any other questions by the board? There's no other questions, roll call motion.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. Campos?
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Accounts payables are approved. I'd like to, uh... Yes, sir, go ahead.
Before we go, uh, into adjournment, um, I just got a couple of questions for James, if I could please?
Yes, sir.
So James, are you telling us that you still have your touch?
Oh, so, I guess so.
You have it off your touch?
Yeah, so I've, I've actually been licensed, uh, as a paramedic since nineteen ninety-eight, so, uh, yeah, I guess, uh, I showed up on that, it was literally just probably half a mile from my house, I was on my way back to work for lunch, so.
That's amazing. Um, is, uh, was Officer Porras present today by chance?
Yes, sir, he was.
Very good. Uh, congratulations, wants to get to both of y'all, we're very proud of you guys and that's, that's a, a phenomenal, uh, achievement. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Campos, I would also like to thank you for always dialing in, uh, helping us keep our distance with COVID nineteen, we really appreciate your participation. Uh, not saying that we miss you here, you know? But, uh...
So you're saying, you're not saying you do?
Well, we want to, we want to show our appreciation for you doing that for us, sir.
Okay, uh, thank you guys, I appreciate y'all.
Yes, thank you, Paul.
Do I have a motion?
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll make a motion to be adjourned.
Second.
Motion was made, second, all in paper. A roll call motion.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Campos?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
It is adjourned, thank you. Commissioner Gandy, have a great week, sir.